Ahead of us. So good morning, everybody. I'm Robert Thiebault. I'm a small business on busman and vice president of Small Business Services. Here at the Arizona Commerce Authority and your host today for this. Bootcamp special session, as you can see, says right there, as we like to do, we kick these off. I want to first ask everybody to post in the chat. Where you're tuning in from. We always like to see where our attendees are coming from. So we got Yuma, Wright, Crystal. Tempe, Phoenix, Flagstaff, Scottsdale, Sedona, EAC. Buckeye, Prescott Page, Stafford, Clifton, Wilcox, Paradise Valley, Lakeside. Yucca Mesa, Tucson, Sierra Vista, Suarita, Talleson. But she all right. Mesa Sholo, Doria, Prescott Valley. Another page, the Apache Junction. Feeny. All right, we got representation from all over the state. We're glad to have everybody with us. Keep posting up in there. Burnside, Notland Nation. Thank you for joining us. You haven't posted up yet where you join tune in from, please post it in there. We like to see the different parts of Arizona where. We have our attendance coming from. And if you're from out of state, even better, post it up so we know what other states are joining us. So as we like to do on our bootcamps, those that aren't familiar with our bootcamps, we do these. With our community partners and we could not do them without all of their time, their effort and their expertise. And we have some community partner experts with us today as well. So the Small Business Bootcamp is a webinar series that we host every Tuesday morning. And we bring in our experts from our community partners and others. And we occasionally do workshops and special sessions. And so today is one of those special sessions. And we do those when there's a specific topic that we need to address and it's time sensitive. So today's. We're doing it today because it's a new program that started on January 1st, so we need to get the word out about. So one of the cool things about the bootcamp is we record all of our sessions and we post them in our content library. So today's session. Will be recorded and it will be posted in the content library. And it can be then you can share the link with others that might benefit from from watching this webinar. Some of the other programs that the ACA has, we like to share are the Career and his Prudential, the Arizona Nation Challenge, Arizona MVP. The Arizona State Trade Expansion Program, Arizona Work and our Small Business Services that oversee. One of those programs is the Small Business Checklist. This is an online interactive tool that helps entrepreneurs, small business owners or businesses looking to expand. Understand the commonly requested licensing registration and compliance requirements at the local state and federal levels. It's a great resource. You can scan QR code and they'll take you to the checklist and to Sally, our virtual assistant. They can also help answer some of those questions. So real quick, some of our upcoming webinars that we've got next Tuesday is how to implement your growth plan. Then we have Small Business Big Impact, A Blueprint for E-Commerce Marketplace. So you're going to focus on doing business on Amazon and Walmart marketplaces. And then we have Motivate Your Prospects to Take Action with Persuasive Language. In other words, you can do all the marketing you want, but you still got to, you still got to sell. And so helping to drive your client prospects with with proper language. So excited about that. We've also got some other workshops and special sessions coming up. And so with those on Thursday, this week, tomorrow at noon, we have a lunch and learn. Common TPT errors and how to avoid them. That's with the Arizona Department of Revenue. So if you have transaction privilege tax, sales tax. You're definitely going to want to watch this and learn some of those errors and what you want to avoid. And then on Thursday, February 1st at noon, we're doing a lunch and learn with the IRS. On avoiding the top mistakes that small businesses make. So trying to help leverage the education arms of both those organizations to. Inform us on things we need to avoid to not get in trouble with tax related stuff. So with that, we're going to jump into today's session. We have Craig Boston and Jeanette Pigeon from the SBDCs throughout the state. Craig from Northland Pioneer College. And Jeanette is from Mojave Community College SBDC. And we will have joining us as well, Garth Stevens, partner at Snell and Wimmer. So we'll have our lawyer expert to also help answer questions. And before I turn the time over to our presenters. I want to make sure that everyone understands. We know you're going to have questions, so please post the questions in the Q and A. You'll find at the bottom of your screen. Has a little text looking icon at the bottom there. So it's Q and A. We want to keep those questions in there to help keep track of them. Because oftentimes they can get lost in the chat. If other people are using the chat for other items. So. The Q and A is the best place to do it. And we'll make sure we run through as many of those questions as we can get to in the time that we have. So. With that, I'm going to stop sharing. I'm going to turn the time over. Jeanette's going to share her screen and. Get started with this.
All right. Thank you so much, Robert. Craig and I are really excited to be here today. To talk to everybody about this important information. And here's our. Up close and personal credentials here, introducing myself as the Center Director for the Small Business Development Center at Mojave Community College. And my colleague Craig Boston, the Interim Center Director at SBDC Northland Pioneer College. And Garth, thank you so much for being here as well to help answer questions. So. If you don't know who the SBDC is, the Small Business Development Center, I just want to take a moment of your time and. Give you a little bit of background information about all of the things that we do. Most importantly of which, and I think probably 99% of everything that we do is no fee or no cost. To you, our clients. And so we provide one-on-one coaching, counseling, business plan development. We get you lender ready. Ensuring that, you know, your information is correct and in good order before you submit any loan documentation. Lots of financial education that we provide one-on-one as well as in the form of trainings. And again, all of that is at no cost to you. We do operate in each of the counties in Arizona. So I'm serve all of Mojave County. And my partner Craig serves in Craig, help me out here. You're in Apache and. What other county do you serve?
Navajo and Apache Counties.
Great. Thanks for that. And so if you're looking for assistance from us, please follow that link that you see down at the bottom of the page. And we'd love to work with you. All right. So a little bit of a disclaimer. So because this information is so new. We, we did our best effort really to make sure that it was all correct and in good order. Both myself and Crave have experience in preparing and submitting the BOI information reports. But we would just want to make sure that you know that the source to go to for any information that you hear today. To make sure that it's up to date and correct is the fincen.gov/boi website. So today's topics, we want to really cover off on the beneficial ownership information reporting. The new requirement that just launched 11 2024. We want to know, want you to know, why do businesses need to report? Who must report? What information must be reported? When must reports be submitted? How does a business submit their information and resources to learn more? And of course, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to post them in the Q and A. We'll answer those. When we get to the end of the content here on our presentation. All right. So why do businesses need to report? Well, the Corporate Transparency Act, the CTA was enacted by Congress in 2021. And according to the website, the law creates a beneficial ownership reporting requirement. Designed to make it harder for bad actors to use shell companies to hide. Their ill-gotten gains and to help law enforcement identify who's behind these bad companies. Companies will report their beneficial ownership information to the Financial Crimes Enforcement Network or FINCEN. Which is a bureau within the US Department of the Treasury. And. Who must report? Really domestic reporting companies. Number one, it's a corporation, a limited liability company. And according to FINCEN on the BOI website, any other entity created by the filing of a document. With the Secretary of State or similar office. A foreign reporting company, it's a corporation, limited liability company or other entity formed under the laws of a foreign country. Or similar office. And then there are non-reporting companies and exempt companies. And we'll get into the details of all of those in a minute. One of the clarifications I want to make in terms of who must report. The domestic reporting company or foreign reporting company, you know, in Arizona and with. Quite a few of our clients, instead of forming a corporation, that's a lot of overhead for small businesses. Solopreneurs, et cetera. They choose to form a limited liability company or in some cases a sole. Proprietor. And so the sole proprietor businesses are currently exempt from this reporting. This is a little bit of an eye test. Hopefully you can zoom in and see it in a little bit more detail. However, all of this information that we're sharing with you today is in the Small Entity Compliance Guide. And Faith is going to share with you the link to the website for small business resources. So there's all this information in the form of a compliance guide. Who's exempt, who's not, how to determine if you're a foreign reporting company or a domestic reporting company. And all the rules and regs. So we want to point you to fincen.gov/boi for any. Specifications or any details that we might have missed in this presentation today. All right. So we get to a couple of definitions about the who, right? So we've got beneficial owners. And so really a beneficial owner is anybody. Who directly or indirectly owns or controls at least 25% of the ownership interests of a reporting company. Or exercises substantial control over a reporting company. So. An individual might be a beneficial owner by virtue of their substantial control, ownership interests or both. And then over here on the right side of the screen, you see some exceptions, right? So. A minor child might have an ownership in the company. Of 25%, but they would be exempt from this beneficial ownership reporting. Same for the rest that you see there over on the checklists on the right hand side. And a beneficial owner. The ownership interest includes equity stock or voting rights, capital or profit interests, convertible interests. Instruments, I should say, options or privileges, any other instrument contract or mechanism used to establish ownership. And. The other clause here exercises substantial control over a reporting company. So you may not have an ownership interest, but if you are an individual. Who is a senior officer, let's say for that company, you have authority to appoint or remove certain officers. You are an important decision maker or you're an individual that has any other form of substantial control over the reporting company. This is probably another eye test for you. This is an excerpt from the handout. But it does explain a little bit with some examples. Those officer roles, the senior officers, right? A president, a CFO, a CEO, COO, etc. And then an important decision maker, right? They make decisions about the business operations, the attributes of the business, the finances of the business. Or the structure of the business. And at the very bottom is a catchall. So. Any other form of substantial control over the reporting company. Control exercised in new and unique ways can still be substantial. For example. Flexible corporate structures may have different indicators of control than the indicators included here. Now, a part of the reporting includes another role known as company applicants. And company applicants are individuals who directly file the document that created or first registered a domestic or foreign reporting company. So for example, in Arizona, if you registered an LLC and you were the organizer of that LLC. You would be considered a company applicant. The company applicant was primarily responsible for directing or controlling the filing of the creation. Or first registration document. Now, there is a little bit of a differentiation here on who needs to report as a company applicant. Based on when the business was registered. And so if you look over on the right side of the screen, you'll see that if the business was created or registered on or after. January 1st, 2024, then you're required to report company applicants. If your business was a domestic reporting company and it was created. Or a foreign reporting company registered before January 1st, 2024. You're not required to report company applicants, just the beneficial owners. So you might be asking then what information is reported? So a reporting company must provide information about itself. And you'll see over here on the right side of the screen, the legal business name, any trade name or doing business as your complete US business address. Any state tribal or foreign jurisdiction of formation. And for a foreign reporting company, the state or tribal jurisdiction of first registration. And then last but not least, your IRS taxpayer identification number. So your employer identification number or foreign tax ID. And a reporting company must provide information about its beneficial owners and company applicants. Again, the name, date of birth, address and the identifying number. So the identifying number is the identifying ID. For that individual and it could be a driver's license, a passport or other document that identifies them. When must reports be submitted? The initial reports are required by all companies that meet the definition of reporting company and are not exempt from that definition. And so we went over that existing reporting companies that created were created or registered to do business in the United States before January 1st. Reports are due by January 1st, 2025. New reporting companies that are created or registered on or after January 1st, 2024 and before. January 1st, 2025 had 90 calendar days. Reporting companies created or registered on or after January 1st, 2025 will have 30 calendar days to report. So as I mentioned at the start, both Craig and I have filed these BOI reports. It's pretty straightforward. You're going to go to the website. WWW fincen.gov/boi. And you're going to submit your, sorry about that. You're, sorry. You're going to submit your initial report. And. Let's say that there's changes in the beneficial ownership or substantial control. Then you're going to need to report any changes after the initial report submission. So at this time, as we understand it, it's a one-time submission for that business entity. However, if there's any changes, you need to update your submission. And if you notice any inaccuracies, you want to make sure that you make those changes and submit those corrections online. And they have a host of information available on their website. For you. And so we talked about the report changes and inaccuracies. This is just kind of a reiteration here on updated reports and corrected reports. And then last but not least, consequences for not filing. So FINCEN is working hard to ensure that reporting companies are aware of their obligations to report, update and correct. Beneficial ownership information. And FINCEN does understand this is a new requirement. It's going to take some time to get the message out. And so if you correct a mistake or omission within 90 days of the deadline for the original report. You may avoid being penalized. However, you could face civil and criminal penalties if you disregard reporting this information. So. Probably won't be enforced right away since this is a new rule. However, it's not up to Jeanette. It's really up to FINCEN on the enforcement efforts. And so with that, I'm going to transition to. My co-presenter Craig and Craig, do you want to pick up here on next step recommendations?
Sure. Thank you. Basically, when you, you know. Going through this several times, it's not hard. This is not difficult to do. And so there's no, you'll be in fear of it. The Small Entity Compliance Guide is extremely important. It's about 50 pages, but it answers most all of your questions. There's still some. I would say some ambiguity, some vagueness in the federal government's. Definition of, you know, who has substantial control, things like that. But it does give us answers on most everything. This website is actually really well laid out. So the FINCEN guidance information is very, it go to that page. There's a link in the chat for the the page to go to. If you have difficult situations, if you have things like minor children involved in the ownership of your companies. Or if you have trusts that are set up differently, getting involved, you know. Consult an attorney, consult a CPA. It's extremely important that you get the correct information. You can consult the Small Business Development Center. In your area and we will do everything we can to help. But sometimes we will recommend that you talk to an attorney or a CPA in that case. The, again, the websites fincen.gov/boi. In there is some really good resources. It's a very easy process to go through. Any of your local SBDC offices can easily help you and assist you do it. I was with somebody yesterday and did five of them in less than one hour with that, with the client. So. They don't take a lot of time. Make sure, you know, when we say, make sure that your driver's license has your current residential address. Make sure that the Arizona Corporation Commission's website, if you have an LLC or a corporation, that the information on there is correct. That that matches up what you put in your BOI reporting. Just so those things are all accurate and put together and the same, I guess, when you're reporting your beneficial ownership information. Next, go ahead and do the next slide. Yeah, well, we can start with some Q and A and. I know we didn't take a lot of time going through all of this because it's individual. Individual companies have very specific questions on this. So it's probably good. With Garth with Sal and Wilmer here to have an attorney as well to maybe answer some of those really difficult questions. But I noticed somebody put in there that single, somebody posted that single owner LLCs do not have to report. I did not find that information anywhere in any of the guidelines. I, Garth, can you answer that question? I believe they still do need to report.
Yeah, they still need to report. There's, there's no exclusion for that.
And so there is some misinformation out there. There are also some companies. Saying that you have to have a FINCEN registration in order to do this. And if you don't have a FINCEN registration, then you need to pay somebody to do it. That's also not true. However, there, there's going to be people out there that are going to tell you, hey, by the way, you have to pay me to do this for you. The ones, the complicated companies, corporations, LLCs, things like that, please. Get assistance from an attorney or, you know, CPA or somebody that can really help you and guide you through this. But for the majority of the small businesses that are going to be dealing with this, you can do it on your own or you can do it with the assistance of. The Small Business Development Center or SCORE or somebody like that.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, Craig. You know, avoid scammers. So. You know, Craig's point about reaching out to a CPA or an attorney. If somebody is reaching out to you that you have not solicited, I would be wary of working with them. Make sure that you're working with somebody who's legitimate.
On that. It is a, as Craig and Jeanette have said, it's a very simple process to upload the information. And while some people may not be happy about having to upload a copy of their driver's license or passport or something like that. This is non-publicly available information. It's used for law enforcement only. A different federal government, federal, state tribal government levels. Banks can access it only with the consent of the reporting company. And the information that you'd be providing, you've probably provided, it's already out there. If you have a driver's license, it's out, you know, it's with a government authority. If you have a passport, the information is with a government authority. So I know some people are very concerned on privacy issues as we all should be, but it's. The daunting part of the task, if anything, is merely kind of compiling the information. And again, if it's a small business, family-owned business, that's not going to be that hard. It's the more complicated structures that may create some additional work, but I agree. Anybody should be able to do this online relatively easy without the need of, you know, engaging another firm.
One thing to also be aware of with this. Craig, you mentioned some people saying, hey, you know, pay us to do it. There's already scam emails going out from nasty players that are trying to get your private information. So if you're getting an email that looks like it's from FINCEN, FINCEN, it's probably not. So be on the lookout or just be aware that there are some scam things going around. So if you get that email. You can just go to the FINCEN website directly and not any link in that email. Because we don't want you to. You know, inadvertently give somebody all your pertinent information. So let's jump into some of the Q and A. We've got a bunch of questions. Thank you, everybody, for posting your questions up. We've got a great swath of questions here. And Garth, I imagine you'll probably answer most of these. But the first one is, how does the law apply to planned community associations? That are incorporated nonprofit entities governed by a homeowner volunteer board?
I'm going to first start, I'm going to defer to Jeanette and Craig since it's their presentation. I don't want to hijack it. So if they want me to answer, I'm happy to answer, but I'm going to let them kind of take the lead where they want to.
I have no idea. I have no idea. An HOA that's incorporated but is a nonprofit.
It's reportable.
It's reportable, but I, so they would, yeah, I think that again, Small Entity Compliance Guide is going to tell you yes or no, pretty much. But if Garth says it's reportable, then it's reportable.
Yeah, I mean, the way we have to operate for the time being is if it's not exempt, it's reportable. So tax exempt organizations are exempt. So that's, those are, those are nonprofits that have been registered with the IRS. As charitable organizations that commonly often hear as a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(4). So if it's a tax exempt org, that is exempt. But, but not just because you're a nonprofit, no, that doesn't make you exempt.
So thank you. All right. Our next one. It says, please show us where the regulations say that sole proprietors are exempt. Many sole proprietors are required. To form via filing with the Secretary of State.
That's true. And that was. That's true. And that was an interesting nugget that Craig and I learned when we attended the. The FinCEN training that they offered. Early in December. But we did ask and it was confirmed that sole proprietors are not required to report.
Yeah, that that's, that's what I, that's, that's correct as well. But just, just so we're clear, that's. Individual persons acting as a sole proprietor, not somebody claiming to be a sole proprietor through a legal entity like a single member LLC.
So and and for Arizona, a little distinction here, the Secretary of State is where you're going to file BBAs. Doing business as, but LLC is filed through the Corporation Commission. So for me, it's new, that's looking at that wasn't quite sure. Each state can be different. So that's why in the early stuff, the presentation I mentioned, or similar entity at the state level. So the Corporation Commission is where all the LLC stuff is filed.
Yeah. And and the thing to remember too, is that by definition under the statute, this applies to reporting companies. So again, we start with the kind of the broad and then work to the exemption. So reporting company, and I'm literally reading right now from the statute is. A corporation limited liability company or other similar entity that is created by the filing of a document with the Secretary of State. Or formed under the laws of a foreign country and registered as has been noted already. So an individual person is not created. By filing a document with the state, which is why they would not be a reporting company.
Excellent. Thank you. So the next one. Let me just answer that one. The next one's real simple, says can we get help file, help with filing this? I mean, Craig answered that, yes, the SBCs can help. They can't do it for you. You still have to do it, but they can help guide you through the process. There's a number of no cost business services out there that should be able to help with that. And if you're. It's more complicated, you may want to reach out to. An attorney. Let's see. Let's talk about that one. We had a lot of questions on the sole proprietor piece. Here's a good one. So if a company was created before 1/1/24. Then we don't have to do any of this? Question mark?
Yeah. So you still, if if the company was created before, you know, 1/1/24. So anytime in the past, what you do not have to do is there's a section in there. That you do not have to complete. And so that's the company applicant. Because most likely, if you created your LLC 20 years ago, you may not even remember who actually filled out all the paperwork with the Arizona Corporation Commission. So you do not have to fill out the company applicant. You check box, you go in there and it says it was your, an existing company. You say yes, and it basically grays out everything. So you don't have to fill out the information for the company applicant. However, you still have to fill out all the information for each beneficial owner of the company, whether it's one or 20.
Now, just to add to that, it's the current ownership. You don't have to go back to the history. And then the other key distinguishing thing is that you have a full year of all of 2024 to get that filing submitted. But only only per companies formed prior to 24. If you were, I think that was already noted. If it's formed in 2024, you've got 90 days to submit from the date of formation and after 2024, it's going to be 30 days.
And if it was prior to 2024, you have all year, correct?
Correct.
So if someone dissolved their LLC, do they need to file any forms?
When was the company dissolved? There's a, there is, Garth, do you remember the timeline on that?
So there is an exemption for entities that are inactive, but not dissolved. But there's a number of criteria and I can, I can read them here if you want. But if we're talking about an entity that's, let's say, when somebody dissolved their company this year. I've got to check on that one. I've gone through the B O I reporting form a few times. I don't recall if there's one that says it was dissolved. I, I don't know. If either of you two took a look at that.
I think I read something in there, but again, in that Small Entity Compliance Guide, I believe it addresses it, but I believe that if you're. If your company is marked inactive with the Arizona Corporation Commission, you might have an exemption. But if it was still active, I don't, I, if it's still there and it still was in existence as of this year, I think you still have to report. And then you can then go in and say that the company is no longer active.
Yeah. So I'll give you a criteria. If it's merely inactive, which means the company still exists, but it's inactive. You have to report unless you meet all of the following. I'm going to read these here. The company was in existence on or before Jan. 1, 2020. It is not currently engaged in any active business. It is not owned directly or indirectly by any foreign person. So any piece of that company can't be owned by a foreign person, meaning anyone that's not a US person. No change in ownership in the past 12 months. No receipt or transmission middle of more than $1,000 in the past 12 months. And it has no assets in the US or abroad, including any ownership interest in any other entity. So if you meet all of that criteria. Then you're an inactive entity and that is one of the exemptions for having to file. But if you don't have all of those six in place. And you've got an otherwise lowercase i effective entity, you still have a reporting requirement. Now that's different from an entity that's been actually dissolved. My thinking would be if it's dissolved, it's dissolved.
Yeah, and I'm not clear on that. I apologize. We, I, that's a, I think that is addressed somewhere in that. Compliance guide, but I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head.
The the other thing to note is, you know, the, these reports are at least initially one time reports. They're not an annual report. But there is this 30 day requirement. If there's ever any change of either company information or beneficial ownership information. You've got 30 days from when the company knew or should have known that that change occurred to file an update. And and I, and I'm also aware that you have the option, of course, if your company goes from being non-exempt to exempt. Then you can file an update to change your status to exempt, which then relieves yourself of further reporting as long as you remain exempt.
And I guess, you know, I'd like to make the point that this is a good opportunity for businesses to really take a look at their. Policies and procedures and identify roles and responsibilities around reporting and making sure that. The changes in beneficial ownership are updated.
And and one thing, by the way, on those updates especially, this really goes to companies that have, you know, where you've got co-owners, business partners, investors, that sort of thing. If you have any kind of a LLC operating agreement or a shareholders agreement or anything like that. You want to consider putting something in there that says that, you know, each equity owner. Agrees to timely provide, you know, all information required for for timely B O I reporting, including any updates. Because, you know, you as the owner of a business aren't going to necessarily know. If one of your shareholders, one of your, your investors, an equity investor, has changes in their beneficial ownership information. So it's their job to let you know so that you can comply with the law.
Good point.
So if you move, if you move and get a new address, you have to update your, you have 30 days to update your B O I information. Or any of your business partners move.
So do S Corps need to report?
Unless they fall within the exemption of over 50 employees. Is it 51, 51 and up or?
You mean, you mean the large operating entity exception?
Large operating entities. Yeah, what's, there's a.
Yeah, it's greater than 20 employees that are employed in the US.
There you go.
Has to have a physical presence office in the US. And the company has to have generated greater than $5 million in.
That's it.
And that one, it has to be as reported in the prior year's federal income tax return. So for instance, if you form a new company this year. And you hit the employee, you hit the physical address and you're already hitting five, greater than 5 million in revenues by some point in the year. You're not exempt yet because you haven't reported that in a prior year's tax return. Yeah. So, but no, S Corp status does not affect any of this stuff, whether you're a C Corp, S Corp or anything else.
Another technical one here says, do you need to report if your LLC houses a self-directed IRA? Or a foreign property?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, again, the, the rule is you have to report unless you fall within one of those 23 exemptions. And so the, the FinCEN. FAQ, which gives you that list of the 23 exemptions, and then, and then the Small Entity Compliance Guide gives you a write-up on each of those exemptions. If you can fall within one of those, and most of those exemptions, by the way, are some kind of regulated business already, banks. Public companies, things like that, that are already subject to reporting a regulation. So really, for the average. Smaller business owner, the only three exemptions that are probably going to apply are the large operating company exemption. The inactive entity exemption, which we've talked about. Or the subsidiary exemption. So if you have a subsidiary of another entity that is itself exempt. 20 of the 23 exemptions and one of those, there's three that don't apply, then that subsidiary is also exempt.
All right. We got a couple of questions on trusts that they're exempt. So the, the main question is, our company is a corporation, how have we placed all the assets in a trust? Do we report? And the trust is noted on the Easy Corporation Commission. And then also tying into that, another question was, are trusts exempt to which ones?
We'll let you handle that one, Garth.
Okay, so a couple of things. I'm, I'm not sure I'm following the question. It says the corporation put its assets in a trust?
That's the question. So it might be one of those complicated ones where you might want to just consult an attorney.
Yeah, definitely sounds, but I'll, I'll tell you this, that generally, and I think it was noted in the presentation. Some trusts, most trusts generally are not required, they're not reporting companies. Unless the trust was formed through the filing of a document with a state authority. So for example, a Delaware statutory trust. Would be a reporting company. So. Definitely when it comes to trust stuff, consult with an attorney. But that's the question of whether or not a trust is, is, is a reporting company. The other question then is, if you have a reporting company. And it has a beneficial owner or more than one beneficial owners that is a trust. Who do you have to report? Because beneficial ownership information is always information about an individual. You have to go, you have to go all the way up the chain to tackle the individuals that apply. So on. You know, in the case of a trust that's a beneficial owner, that would be a trust that owns 25% or more of the ownership interests of the entity. There are reporting requirements and that is, any trustee. That person would be a beneficial owner for purposes of reporting, or any other individual has authority to dispose of trust assets. The grantor or settler of a revoke, of a revocable trust who has the power to revoke or amend the trust agreement or to revoke trust assets. Any beneficiary who was the sole permissible recipient of trust income and principal. And any beneficiary has the right to demand a distribution or withdrawal substantial assets of the trust. So each of those persons, to the extent they exist. Is a beneficial owner has to be reported.
We, we've had a few questions in here about how FinCEN will use the information, and I think you answered this previously, Garth, about. That it's just for them, you know?
Yeah, it, it's, it's for law enforcement. I mean, as, as Jeanette noted at the beginning of the presentation, this is about. Trying to track or stop money laundering, sanctions evasion, illicit business practices that people have used, shell companies and other, you know. Complex corporate structures to hide. And then banks can request it, but again, only if the reporting company consents. To, to the disclosure.
And we have the, the question of nonprofits is, is this applicable to nonprofit organizations and businesses? And I believe we. We answered that, that yes, it is.
Yes, yes, unless they are, they are tax exempt. Federally tax exempt entities.
We had a question that says, can you provide more details as to what type of entities are exempt from this requirement?
Well.
That FinCEN document is probably the best way to identify that.
It, it lays them out there. Garth, is there 23?
23.
23 exemptions.
So if you want, I'll, I'll, I'll read them really fast. All right. So securities reporting issue, would that be a public company? A governmental authority, a bank, a credit union, a depository institution holding company, money services business. A broker or dealer in securities, that would be a registered broker dealer. Securities exchange or clearing agency, other exchange act registered entity, investment company or investment advisor, again, registered. Venture capital fund advisor, insurance company, state licensed insurance producer, commodity exchange act registered entity, accounting firm, public utility. Financial market utility, pooled investment vehicle, tax exempt entity, entity assisting a tax exempt entity, that would be as its primary business or sole business. Large operating company, a subsidiary of certain exempt entities, or an inactive entity.
So there we have it.
And I, I'm just going to add to that, Robert, if, if, you know, after you've done your due diligence, if you still have questions. And and after consulting, you know, CPA or an attorney. You can always reach out to fincen.gov on the B O I website and pose that question to them. And then that way you're getting it directly from them.
Good point. We talked about nonprofits and some may be required. So with that. Looking at nonprofits that don't have necessarily owners, but they have board members, are board members required to be reported?
So there, there's two categories of beneficial ownership. And one is ownership, 25%, and then one is this category that's referred to as substantial control. And so substantial control of any entity is senior officers like CEO, president, CFO, COO, or persons performing similar functions. Individuals with the ability to appoint or remove any senior officer or a majority of the board of directors or any similar body. Important decision makers, those are individuals who direct or have substantial influence over important decisions, financial, structural, business. Or any other form of substantial control. So for a nonprofit, any of those people would apply. Merely being on the board of directors, unless you fall within one of these other categories that I've listed, does not make you a substantial control person.
Another question is, can you report B O I before your articles of incorporation are published?
Once the company is formed, you're formed, publishing, we're just talking about the local publishing in a paper, that, that's sort of an ancillary activity. So yes, once the company is formed, you can. You can do your report. Now, again. Sounds like somebody that's just formed this year, 2024. So sure, you can do it, but you've got 90 days from, from the data formation.
All right. Oh, this is a really good one. Will they take rural addresses? Example, most native small. Businesses on reservations have no addresses. Normally P O boxes are utilized.
So my understanding is, is that if you have a tribal. Business that is registered with the, your tribal entity, then you, you use the address. For your business that you are registered with. That's, but you're right. I mean, we, I don't know if the system. When, when I was work with a client yesterday entering their addresses, they were entering it. It didn't come back and say, that's not a correct address. It's, so I think you just, whatever your business, however your business is registered with the. Under your, if, if it's a tribal business, use that address would be my suggestion.
I don't know. It's a good answer. I'm afraid I, I had thought the answer was you could not use P O boxes. That was a prohibition, but obviously if there are cases where that's the only address, that does make for an interesting situation.
Yeah, you know, at a totally separate federal form, I know with the Navajo Nation. And if you're buying a firearm. You can use some of the descriptive language to where your, your domicile is at. So. Because on, on the reservations, often people know that it's, you say, pass the second cactus on the left, people know that's the location. It's understood. But that can be a little complicated. So I like Craig's answer as a recommendation. And I guess you have to go with that for now.
Right. It's how you report it, how you registered the business. And so it's the address that you use that you registered the business with. When it comes to your B O I information. Because you're reporting your company as a reporting company, so you're using that address that was, you registered the business with. When it comes to your personal address on the tribal. When it comes to your personal address on the tribal, uh, for, um, members, uh, uh, of our, uh, uh, our tribes. I just use your address that you use and see what happens. Um, I honestly, I, it's not, I could not find any of that in the small entity compliance guide. And I've been looking for the last two months. I actually posed that question, um, in, in a, uh, uh. Webinar with FinCEN and they did not respond to it. Um, so we, I, I think we're going to see how it all plays out. Um, in the next, uh, few weeks is, because our, being up here in Navajo and Apache County, we work with, uh, several. Good companies that are on tribal lands and so we're going to find out.
Yep.
So, so Dusty posed a question and Dusty, that's. We're not here to answer that, uh, you know, I want to just recognize that she posed that question. Um, it's more, you know, we're just helping to try to share the information. Um, so we can't explain why FinCEN came up with these rulings, but they, they did so. Um. I just want to recognize that Dusty did that, asked a question that was more related to the reasons behind this whole thing. Um. All right, Marie says, if an LLC was closed in one state and a new one opened in another, are. Both of them need to be registered or only the current one?
What, what, when you say closed, does that mean that it was dissolved?
Yeah, I'm going to assume it's they moved, say they moved from. From North Dakota to Arizona.
Yeah, I mean, LLCs, I mean, can re-domesticate. They can, they, they, they can change their state of domicile or they can simply register in a new state. So. An LLC is only domesticated in one state. Um, so I'm, again, it's, it's, it's a sort of a fact specific question. But if the LLC still exists, it's just domesticated in a different state. Then, uh, you would report that LLC in whatever its current state of domestication is.
Um, let's see. That's interesting. It says, should the wife who is not a member of the LLC file a B O I report for an LLC? With only one member, husband, in Arizona, which is a community property state?
That's true. Community property doesn't, I'm sorry, I keep jumping in.
No, go ahead. No, Garth, that one's you because, um, I don't, I, I would say no, but, um, you know, because they're not.
Yeah, unless she has substantial control, I would say, but Garth, what do, what do you say?
Yeah, you know, the funny thing is, and I, and I should, I should mention that ownership interest, which is the term they use. Is extremely broadly defined. So we're not just talking here about stock ownership or LLC interest ownership. It's. It's construed to include things like rights and options and warrants and convertible instruments that are, and convertible into equity. And all sorts of stuff, but as broad as that list is, I haven't seen anything which indicates that a community property interest is included in there. So, I mean, a spouse can file the report on behalf of the company, but spouse is not a beneficial owner. It would just be the, the sole member. That, that's the current, my current understanding. Again, I have not seen anything that indicates that a community property interest is an ownership interest.
Right, here's a good one. This will probably be for Garth. It says, are you saying a DBA won't have to file? If it's a sole prop and they're just, and they have a DBA.
If, if it's an individual person operating under a DBA, that is not a reporting company, so there's no requirement to file.
And Robert, on that, with DBAs, one of the things, some companies have multiple DBAs. There is a, uh, an area in there to list all of the DBAs under the reporting company. So if you have multiple DBAs under one reporting company, don't worry, there's, you can add all of them.
All right, here's a technical one. It says, if a company raises capital after filing. Its initial report and sells twenty-six percent of its equity, then it must file an updated report, correct? What if only a twenty-four percent equity stake is sold, no need to file an updated report?
A, a company could sell a ninety-nine percent equity stake. What matters is, is you have to report the people that own. Uh, twenty-five percent or more. So if the company went out and sold twenty-six percent, but that was spread among four or five people. Such that nobody owns twenty-five percent or more, then, then none of those people have a reporting obligation. Or the company does not have a reporting obligation for those people.
So if you had five. Partners in a LLC, each had twenty percent, you wouldn't have to file?
Well, you don't have to fall for them in their capacity as an owner of a twenty-five percent or greater interest. But if any of those people meet the substantial control test, any of those categories, then yes, then you have to follow them.
Okay.
And the important thing, just a reminder to people is, this is. It, it, whether through ownership or substantial control directly or indirect. Meaning that if somebody invests through a trust or through a holding company or through a series of holding companies or anything that sort of. Creates a chain, you look through all of that until you get to, uh, anybody who is an individual that meets one of those criteria.
And, and I think you just answered this next question, um, but we'll ask the question anyhow. It says, for a non-public C Corp. Who did a Q E S stock sale. And the stock is now owned by employees in their 401 K accounts. Do we have to list each employee as a beneficial owner?
Um, I haven't seen any, any guidance at all that would distinguish. Whether equity is owned through a 401 K, IRA, anything like that. Again, you come back to the twenty-five percent. I mean, seems somewhat unlikely that you would have any employee that would own twenty-five percent or more of a company, possible. I think right now the answer would be, if that happens, then yeah, that, that, those employees that own twenty-five percent or more would need to be reported.
Um, so an LLC is still active, but the business has been closed. For a year or more, do they still need to report?
Yeah, just, just to go back to the inactive com, well. Assuming the LLC does not meet otherwise any of the other exemptions. The, the company has to, again, I'm just going to run back through these, all of these six requirements. It existed on or before January one twenty twenty. It's not engaged in any active business now, not owned directly or indirectly by a foreign person. No change in ownership in the last twelve months, no receipt or transmit of more than a thousand dollars in the past twelve months. And no assets in the U S or abroad are owned, including any ownership interest in any other entity. So those are the six criteria. All of them have to be hit for the inactive entity exemption to apply.
Okay. Um, here's an interesting one. It says, I have an LLC and will file, um, appropriately. I'll be liquid, liquidating my LLC and closing it in twenty twenty-four. Does that constitute a change? Where an update to the application is required to be filed?
I think the answer is yes. Again, I, I haven't, I, well, I've played around with some on the, on the B O I recording form online. I, I don't recall. What you entered to report a company's dissolution, but logically there, that should be in there. I don't know, Craig or Jeanette, if you've, if you've seen that.
I have not.
I'm actually going to be doing that sometime this week with somebody, so I'll find out. But I think that there's, you, you, there's the updates. So you can go in and do an update to it and it would be then considered an exempt company because it doesn't exist anymore. So it's not.
It's not even exempt company, it's just not a reporting company.
Right, not a reporting company anymore.
All right, let's see, answered a bunch of these. Um, question is, how will the average company know about this new B O I requirement? Um, hopefully they're getting information from organizations like us, the S B C. You know, other organizations are sending out information. Um, if you know business owners, share the information with them. Just let them know, hey, you might want to watch this webinar or hey, check this out, um, to, to get the word out, um. So it may be tough. Have you guys heard anything else on how they're trying to reach every business?
You know, a lot of outreach by FinCEN, including through organizations like this, but I mean. It's going to take a while. This is expected to affect thirty-two million companies in the U S. So it's going to take a while and I would expect that FinCEN, even if they wanted to. Start enforcing this, they'd have such a load on their plate, I, I just find it hard to believe they're going to be able to do anything. I, I would point out, it was noted that, you know, that there are penalties for failure to comply. And those are civil and criminal. So it's, uh, the, but the key thing is, it's a willful. Willfully providing false or fraudulent, uh, beneficial ownership information in a report. Or willfully failing to make new or updated reports. So willful means you know you're supposed to and you didn't. So, you know, for people that aren't aware of this, especially in this newer phase. I find it a little difficult to believe that FinCEN is going to spend time prosecuting people that. Didn't report when they were supposed to, at least probably upfront. Um, but just so people are aware of, of, of the, the penalties. Uh, so, you know, willfully failing to report or willfully providing false or fraudulent information. There is fine of up to five hundred dollars per day for each day the violation continues. And a fine of up to ten thousand dollars or two years in jail or both. So that's, it, it, that sounds a little scary potentially, but I think for your average small business owner, especially those that. They're not paying attention to federal, new federal laws that come out. My gut tells me that. I, I think they're relatively safe in, in the near term, but. No one wants to be in a situation where they have to defend themselves to the federal government in an argument of whether or not their failure to comply was willful or not.
Right. Excellent. So we are a little past time. Uh, we want to thank everybody for the great questions that you shared. We didn't get to all of them, but a lot of them are repeat of information that was asked, um, just little specifics of their business. Um, so any last words, Garth or Craig or Jeanette, that you want to share as we, we close this up with what people should think about?
The only thing I'll say is, I think, as, as I think Jeanette and Craig have noted is that. The, the, the FinCEN information available on their website is actually very good. It's very user friendly. You don't have to be a lawyer to understand it. Um. And, and, and completing the, the B O I reporting online. Again, if you can fill out a passport application online. Or any kind of form online, you can do one of these. It, it's certainly not rocket science.
Excellent. Thank you. So definitely check out the, the FinCEN website. Uh, we did post it in the chat early on. Um, and I think we're going to post it up again real quick here, but, uh. We appreciate everybody being with us for this. Um, again, this session was recorded. And it will be posted in our content library, hopefully by tomorrow, so you can either review it or share it with others. Um, but, you know, we want to do this and get it to you as soon as possible through the year. Um, there may be other rulings that change and add more information to it. We will probably do a follow-up session in a few months. Uh, as new stuff may come out, but, uh, we want to thank Craig and Jeanette for preparing the presentation. Thank Garth for being here with us to have our expert legal, uh, opinions as well. Uh, we couldn't do these webinars without our expert, our community partners, so I thank them. And we hope everybody has a great day and great rest of your week and we will see you soon. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.